Okay. The, I hereby call the order of the zoning board of adjustment regular meeting October fifteenth, twenty twenty four at seven thirty-four. Call to order and statement of compliance. Adequate notice of this meeting slash hearing has been provided by posting a copy of the public meeting slash hearing dates on the municipal bulletin board and website. My mic wasn't on, I'm sorry. Start again. Call to order and statement of compliance. Adequate notice of this meeting slash hearing has been provided by posting a copy of the public meeting slash hearing dates on the municipal bulletin board and website, by sending a copy to the Echo Sentinel and Courier-News newspapers, and by filing a copy with the municipal clerk. Standard board procedures. Any hearing conducted by the board is a quasi judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and decorum appropriate to judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Meeting cut off. Announcement is made that is a matter of procedure. It is the intention of the zoning board of adjustment not to continue any matter past ten thirty PM at any regular or special meeting of the board unless a motion is passed by the members then present to extend the meeting to a later specified cutoff time. Electronic devices. All in attendance are asked to mute your cell phones. Which I just did. Or any electronic devices as to not interrupt the proceeding. Pledge of allegiance. Would you lead us, Tom, please? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. We'll call.
Okay, Mr. Aronio.
Here.
Ms. Brennan.
Here.
Mr. Jeanakis.
Here.
Mr. Flatt.
Here.
Mr. Rosenberg.
Here.
Mr. Watts.
Here.
Ms. Collins is excused this evening. Vice Chairman Grosskopf.
Yeah.
Chairman Correct.
Yes, here.
Chairman, we have a call.
All right, thank you. Now, we have no less than four resolutions to approve. And the first one is Chad and Jill Miller, sixty-seven Cottage Place, Gillette, New Jersey, block one three four zero seven, lot two six, application number two four dash one five Z. The hearing date was October first, two thousand twenty-four. The board action was October first, two thousand twenty-four. Has everybody had a chance to review these resolutions?
Eligible members are Chairman Correct, Mr. Aronio, Mr. Flatley, and Mr. Jeanakis.
Okay, what was that again?
Chairman Correct, Mr. Aronio, Mr. Flatley, and Mr. Jeanakis.
Okay, all right, so there's four of us, okay. Again, has anybody, has everybody had a chance to review it? Any changes?
Yes.
Any changes or corrections to it?
None.
Okay, we'll call for the eligible.
I'll move. I'll move this resolution.
Yeah, move, I'm sorry, move it.
Twenty-four fifteen Z.
I'll second it.
Okay, we'll call.
Mr. Aronio.
Yes.
Mr. Flatley.
Yes.
Mr. Jeanakis.
Yes.
Chairman Correct.
Yes. All right, one down. Next one is David Santos, four thirty-nine Valley Road, Gillette, New Jersey, block one zero nine zero one, lot one three, application two four dash one seven Z. Hearing date was October first, twenty twenty-four. Board action was October first, twenty twenty-four.
Same members on this, Chairman Correct, Mr. Aronio, Mr. Flatley, and Mr. Jeanakis.
Can I ask a question about this one before we move it?
Certainly.
All right, so I know who's reading it. Number four, questioning of members and as well as the board engineer, Mr. Santos testified, yada, yada, yada. Some of the yadas in there are that something that he applied for permits for and something that he didn't apply permits for. I don't know if there's any verification of that, but the stuff that was applied for permits, the township got its permit fee and went out and did inspections. The ones where it wasn't done.
What page are you talking about?
Page three of nine.
Oh, and number four, okay.
Number four. Some of the items that, and they're not very significant, the permits were not pulled for. Do permits ever get pulled afterwards? I know in real estate closings, sometimes permits get pulled for, and so there's no fee collected, and there's no inspection done for the other work, and we're basically saying, we understand you did this without permits, now you have our blessing to do everything else with permits. Except for these items that.
I'm not quite sure what you're asking. In other words, you're saying by this resolution, do we absolve the things that he needed permits for, is that what you're saying?
I didn't say that, you said that, I guess that's what I'm saying.
Well, we absolve the things if I can, we absolve the things that he needed a variance for, not necessarily permits for.
Correct.
Right.
He still needs to get the permits.
Yeah, he still would need to get the permits.
Isn't that beyond our scope, though? Do we follow up on permits? We don't really do that.
We follow up on our side.
Yes, so yes, he would still have to get the permit. And the inspections would still have to be done. We just gave him the variance for it.
Got it, okay, so they should be on his applications for permits?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Okay, so who's on this one again, same people?
Chairman Correct, Mr. Aronio, and Mr. Flatley.
May I have a motion to approve this resolution?
Motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second it.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Jeanakis?
Yes.
Mr. Flatt?
Yes.
Mr. Aronio?
Yes.
Chairman Correct?
Yes. Okay, next one is the application of Edward Siven and Mariza de La Rosa, seven, thirty old Farmhouse Road, Millington, New Jersey, block one zero one zero two, lot four, application number two four dash two zero Z. Hearing date, October fifteenth, board action date, October fifteenth, and the mobilization would be today. Who's eligible?
Eligible members are Chairman Correct, Vice Chairman Grosskopf, Mr. Rosenberg, and Mr. Watts.
Okay.
I'll move it forward.
All right, second? All right, we'll call.
Vice Chairman Grosskopf?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Watts?
Yes.
Chairman Correct?
Yes. Next one is Anthony Di Amato. It's the Ten Castle Place, Gillette, New Jersey, block one zero seven zero one, lot one zero dash zero one, application two four dash two one Z. Hearing date, October fifteenth, board action, October fifteenth, and mobilization today. Same people?
Same people, Chairman Correct, Vice Chairman Grosskopf, Mr. Rosenberg, and Mr. Watts.
Do I hear a motion?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
I just noticed on the last one, if the resolution says now, do you resolve on this nineteenth day, does that matter?
Oh, I'll have to change that.
Yeah.
If there were some things that were in there incorrect, then I'll find them.
Actually, the last two, it says nineteen.
Okay, well, we'll fix those dates, yeah.
Right.
Okay. Okay, other than that, we'll fix dates. Do I hear a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
Okay, we'll call.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Grosskopf?
Yes.
Mr. Watts?
Yes.
Chairman Correct?
Yes. Okay, good, so we've done those, all right. Now the next one is we have to move, carry. There's a block one three five zero nine, lot four zero, zone R four, forty Mitchell Road, application two four dash one nine Z. Jessica and Harold Alain, A L A A N, applicant proposes to construct in addition to an existing single-family dwelling. I understand there was a problem with the notice on that?
Yes, unfortunately, the Echo Sentinel, there was an error, and they did not publish their notice in the paper on time.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the carrying of that to December seventeenth, twenty twenty-four?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, we move that one.
We want a note on that one, go ahead.
Right, real quick, Mr. Chairman, just to point out, due to the official duties here, this matter, the forty Mitchell Road application is going to be carried to the December seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, meeting with additional notice being required only as to publication. The applicant did provide sufficient, at least to my knowledge, provided sufficient mailing of personal notice to all property owners within two hundred feet of the subject property. So if you're here for the Alain application, forty Mitchell Road, we'll be hearing that on December seventeenth, this is your notice to come back then for that hearing.
Okay.
There's that, that's out of the way.
All right, very good, thank you.
My pleasure.
Okay, now, the next one up, that actually we're going to hear tonight, is a bulk variance and floor area ratio, block one two seven zero two, lot four seven dash zero four, zone R two, twelve Ave Maria Court, application number two four dash two two Z, and George Wang, applicant proposes to construct in addition to an existing single-family dwelling. Is the applicant present? Have a seat. Yeah, we usually have one out here, hold on.
No, I only bring it in.
Oh, 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 okay. Oh, I thought I would see it sitting here.
No, because usually applicants bring their own.
Okay.
I only, I hide it so nobody steals it.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, while we're getting set up, I'll just point out for the record.
Yes, you want to go do that?
Real quick, on the notice, I reviewed it, I found it to be sufficient, both in terms of its content and timeliness of service, both, it was well published on time, more than today's advance of this hearing, and sent to us, owners of properties within two hundred feet of the subject property by certified mail, more than ten days in advance of tonight, so the board's jurisdiction here to decide the case. So we're still waiting for Deb, I can swear everybody in as well.
Yeah, why don't you swear everyone in? Everybody raise their right hand, please, he's going to swear you in.
Miss in the audience, are you testifying on?
No, she's the Echo Sentinel.
Oh, my apologies, okay.
She only reports.
Okay, okay, I didn't know if you were with the applicant. Okay, do all three of you swear or affirm that testimony perhaps provided be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, great, awesome, all right, just give us a second, we'll wait for Deb.
We just got married.
Yeah, I know.
Now pronounce you.
Applicant and wife, yeah. You can have a seat.
Relax. While you're there, check that microphone, make sure that's working. Okay, okay, just wait.
You might want to put the center down a little bit on that, it's going to collapse. Yeah, that's right, yeah, that way it won't collapse. Okay, how do you pronounce your last name?
W A N G Wong.
Wong, okay, that's what I thought, thank you.
Either you say Wen or Wong, I'm user-friendly, so.
I just want to make sure I'm pronouncing it correct.
Yeah, that's okay.
Yeah, Mr. Wong, you're, and you are a?
I'm an architect.
Architect, okay. Could I just have your credentials and background so I could deem you qualified as an architect?
Yes, Douglas Osral, registered architect, graduate of New Jersey School of Technology, been licensed since two thousand.
And your license is still current?
It's still current, and I've appeared before boards of adjustment, most recently Madison, Hanover Township, and Florham Park.
Have you ever appeared in Long Hill?
I have, I appeared here about ten or twelve years ago.
I should remember you, but I don't, sorry. I deem you qualified, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so would one of you like to just some, just to give us an introduction of why you're doing this and the purpose for it?
Sure, sure.
Mr. Chairman, before we go any further, can I skip both of your addresses for the record, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sure. Twelve Avenue Maria Court, Millington, New Jersey, zero seven nine four six.
Okay, and Mr. Oswalt, was that your name?
Osral, A S R A L.
A S R A L?
Yes.
Okay, your business address, please.
Nine Whippenny Road in Whippenny, New Jersey.
Okay, awesome, thank you so much. Okay, Mr. Wong, back to you.
Yeah, good evening, thanks for having this meeting for my request for variance. You know, the reason why we request a variance, from my perspective, is pretty straightforward, three points. Number one, from house internal perspective, the two in the rooms, in the, well, you called the second floor or two and a half floor, whatever, in the attic, no vertical windows, it's pretty dark, and they only, I mean, for two rooms, right, for each room, they only have those like skylight type of window, you can only open that high, there's a handle, you can open that, but only that much. So in that case, the air in the, in the, in the top, I mean attic, whatever floor you call, right, so it's really not fresh. I mean, the air circulation is pretty bad, and.
Rooms used for now?
Bedroom, yeah, I will tell you why later, yeah, so, yeah, so, yeah, so basically, it's too easy, right, one is pretty dark, and the second one is, is, is air, and especially in the summer, because there's no air conditioning on the top. There's a heater, but no air conditioning, I don't know, because I'm the second owner, yeah, I mean, I don't know how the original owner feels, it's kind of like customized, but that's just reality. So that's why we'd like to make some change. Well, I mean, I noticed there's questions in the letter, I think a planner's letter I got from Deborah this afternoon, right, regarding, you know, actually, for the whole house, you have, you know, or have a room in the basement, and the basement is considered a floor, right, by definition, something like a fifty percent, you know, above or some, right, yeah, 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 so I think I understand, I mean, this criterion, right, I mean, like a treat this half basement as a, as a floor, because, you know, for, for a house, like my house, right, part of the area totally underground, and a part of the area, I mean, for the basement level, right, is, is above the ground, right, like a walkout.
And you have a walkout basement.
We have a walkout basement, so basically, so, I mean, you, you have to classify, right, a house, I mean, room, like mine, and you have to have something like a cutoff point, right, and now the cutoff point is fifty percent. So I understand, so this is standard helpful, right, for some maybe other purpose, or technical, or maybe zoning, or planning, or tax, whatever, but from the perspective of person who live in their house.
Using it.
Use it, right, and from house perspective, it doesn't help. Because, I mean, the issue is, is, you know, you have halfway, totally underground, so all those like redone, whatever, those are bad, like harmful things, right, in the, in the typical, like a full basement, already there, maybe at a lesser, like a degree, right, because you have open out, like a, like a walkout part, but comparing with a regular floor, that means a hundred percent above ground, it's totally different, right? So that's why.
To get to, I think, I, what I understand you're saying is that you need the rooms that you're changing on the second floor to be more usable-friendly, to have the windows larger, to have better ventilation, and more light.
Exactly, yeah, so that's why we didn't, even though, namely, we have more rooms in the basement, right, we need to consider floor, but we couldn't use it as a bedroom, we use it as a storage room. That's why I mentioned earlier, why we rather use rooms in attic, not using the room, even though it's dark and, and air issues, but we, we were not using the room in the basement, even though, I mean, namely, there, we only use that storage.
In the front of your house, it looks like a two-story house, right?
From backyard, it's a two, but from the front, actually, I tried to address it into in my second point, yeah.
Well, it slopes from front to back, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the front looks like.
From straight perspective.
Looks like a one-story house.
Yeah, exactly, that's what I tried to say, from my second point.
So I'm sorry, did you, did you send that picture in with your application?
Did you send it in?
I think earlier I took a picture.
It's part of the package.
It's in there?
No, you're okay, you're okay, I just make sure we got it, I just want to make sure, because if not, we'd have to take it as an exhibit.
Sure, sure, yeah, so.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not sure I see it.
I don't see it on my app.
Oh, well, I can send you more, I mean, I have one here.
You have color?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I don't get, I didn't get color.
I didn't get color.
Let me see that.
I think we got it digitally, someone at my firm printed it out.
Yes, I don't think you did. Yeah. No, that's all right, that's all right.
No, he's showing it, all right, so. All right, so real quick, while everyone's looking at their photographs, I'm going to mark this as exhibit A one, this is a photograph he submitted of, call it grayscale photograph of the house. Do you know when this was taken, rough idea?
Oh, this, I just downloaded from a router dot com.
Okay, so real.
It's the same, I mean, it doesn't change, yeah, yeah. I mean, actually, I sent Deborah a picture I took just like last month or something like that.
Could you print out the four color photographs for everybody?
I can't, I can't print it in color, but I can print it.
Could you print them in black and white at least? Because I think it's important we have that.
Yep.
Just, we'll take a second break.
Sure, sure, yeah, yeah, no, no.
Okay, all right, you could keep talking.
Oh, okay, okay.
All right.
Have a question?
Well.
I do have a question when.
Well, one second.
It's the appropriate time.
Yeah, one second. Okay, now, aside from what you just told us, is there, when you, how long you been living in the house?
Since twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen, okay.
We bought a house like October or something like that, we move in, yeah.
And I see, yeah, from the back, you have, it looks more like a two-story, right?
Right, right, yeah.
Is anything changing with the back of the house?
No, no.
Yeah, all right, does anybody have questions of Mr. Wong?
Yes.
You have questions?
So you were describing it as two and a half story, I think you were saying that earlier on, it doesn't matter, I don't want to, don't get hung up on the terminology.
Yeah, 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 we have a base.
I think I know, but I just need to be, I want it to be clear, that the basement is one story, you have a middle level.
Right.
And then you have, forget the ordinance, and the law, you have a third story, which is the bedrooms. And that's what we're talking about right now.
Right.
And there's an attic above that.
No, 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 the, the, the sort of one is attic. I mean, the basement, the first floor, the second floor actually is attic, that's why they only have like skylights, they don't have rooms.
But it has a staircase to go up.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
There's no one to pull down or anything else. Above that, I'm just want him to, I want him to, so above that, there's no pull-down attic, there's no access to the.
Just roof, that's it.
Just the roofing.
Just roof.
So those, so those bedrooms up there touch the, the ceiling is the roof?
Yeah, exactly, yeah, exactly, yeah.
That, that's really what I wanted to know, so.
Okay.
You're really, you're in the attic, that's really your second floor of the house.
Exactly, exactly.
And these windows, if we're looking at the picture next to the aerial view, to the, directed to the left, looking at the rear elevation of your house, the windows on the top two windows, we're talking about those are the roll-out windows that don't provide sufficient air.
This is proposed, not, not a current, not existing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead.
Just want to say.
Yeah.
This house is. Thank you. A walkout, a walkout, a table. I have, yeah, so thank you.
It looks bigger than it is. Oh, it looks.
From the back and smaller from the front.
It looks smaller, right.
Yeah, so if I can continue.
The skylights, is that what you were saying before, these are the only air circulation?
That's for the front, actually, there's in the back.
The back, oh, sorry, this too.
Yeah, right, 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 right.
That's it?
Yeah, that's it, exactly.
Can I, can I ask a point of clarification, either for the architect or Mr. Watts? So this is the existing house, right?
Right, exactly, yeah.
Okay, the top floor here, there's bedrooms in here right now?
Exactly, that's, that's the two rooms, that's just behind this roof.
There's two bedrooms on this.
Yeah, one this side, one that side, right, exactly, yeah. We don't, that's why we don't have windows.
Right.
You couldn't tell there's a room behind.
All right, so then you're proposing is in addition on top of this to add additional bedrooms and additional bathrooms, right?
We, yeah, yeah.
The longer to the plans, I'm just trying to confirm what's existing and what's being proposed. The existing roof would come up. Okay.
It would pop up in the center.
In the center, not over the entire footprint.
Okay.
Just the, the center for exact square footage would be for an additional six hundred seventy-three, for a total of fourteen, one thousand four hundred fifty-five square feet over the center.
You have to pass those. No, no, there's pictures that came out.
Can I ask a question, since we're understanding this house? The picture to the left on the bottom there, yeah, you're pointing at the windows on the side of the house, the left side of the house, if you were facing the house, right? The, the window in the lower level.
Thank you, Tom.
There's a dotted line, and then there's two windows that must open or something, and I'm just wondering, has that window that used to be there been made larger, and what would be the reason for making it larger?
I think what we see, the existing condition, the side here.
Side, well, there's another, should be another picture.
Well, you know, oftentimes, previous stuff that was there is in dotted lines, so if you look at the picture, there's a section that's half the size of that window that's dotted.
Yeah, there's a window well there, it's not being removed, it's.
Yeah, it's just a window.
It's an existing window, the dotted lines indicate the.
Window well, not the existing window, so the window that was there is the same size as what's proposed.
Yeah, we're not changing anything.
Okay.
We don't change anything for the basement and the first floor, the only thing is, is the top, I think.
I understand.
The majority of the house, I mean, the majority of the front, the sod is completely underground, then it drops off for the access to the garage below, and the entire back is exposed, walkout, and, and slopes from the grade, from the patio up to the front.
Right, and the windows are all on the lowest level, where the walkout basement is, are all being kept the same size as they were before.
We don't change anything basement and first floor, not, nothing.
What's on the first floor currently? What kind of rooms?
Oh, you mean first floor?
Yeah, what's on the first floor?
Kitchen, living room, I think there's two, like, like bedrooms, I mean, one is actually used as a bedroom for my wife, and another is my wife uses as her home office.
Oh, okay, so it's just two bedrooms on the first floor?
Two beds.
If we're talking about the middle level.
Yeah.
Yeah, middle level.
Well, I'm talking first living floor, the, not, I'm not calling the basement a floor.
Right, 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 the first floor, right.
Are there any bedrooms on the basement level? Are there any bedrooms in the basement?
Well, there's two rooms, I don't know, but we cannot use, you know, as a bedroom, as I mentioned, for the reason I just mentioned, just read on those kinds of things.
Use them as bedrooms. Yeah, there's no, there are two rooms in the, in the basement, it's just storage. Uh, yeah, there's no, there are two rooms in the ba- in the basement, it's just storage.
Storage, right, right, exactly, yeah.
You can't put a bedroom down there unless you have two modes of egress.
Right, uh, this house had a fire, correct?
Yeah, exactly, that, that's the third point I tried to.
Yeah, because I see the window, have, has it been repaired since the fire?
Uh, well, th- th- that's why, I mean, the, the third thing I tried to say, right?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, uh, maybe I can finish like a second or third.
Go ahead, go ahead, take your time.
Yeah, yeah, alright, so the first thing I just mentioned, right, I mean, from a house internal perspective, right, why we want to do that, the room, right, the darkened one, well, the second thing is from a house external perspective, if you stand on the street, right, take a look at the house, and my house is the only one in the entire block, only with one layer of windows.
Hmm.
Everybody else.
It's two stories.
Two stories, I mean, even one room, uh, I mean, one house, twenty-third Avenue Maria Court, they even have three layers of windows.
Yeah.
I, I, if, if you need that, I have, I have more copies of that.
Yeah, that's fine, thank you, give them to, uh, we want to mark them.
Uh, well, I mean, just, you can give it to.
Yeah, okay.
I got it.
Chris to mark that.
So, so basically, I mean, my house just looks like a, like a outliers, I mean, for the, for the entire street, everybody at least two layers of windows.
So you're saying your house is the odd house house?
It, 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 it's totally outliers.
And, and part of that is due to the terrain of the property where it goes down, where everybody else's tends to be flatter.
Uh, well, I, I never go through the backyard of that property, I don't know how this look like.
But I'm saying most of the other properties don't have that extreme slope down to the back.
I, well, I, I couldn't ta- I couldn't tell either yes or no, because I don't know, I, I just don't have that information.
Mr. Wong, I'm sorry to cut you off, I just got to do my housekeeping here, so this, this photograph you submitted, twenty-three Ave Maria Court, um, this is also from Realtor dot com, I'm assuming.
Right, 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 right.
And this ac- to your knowledge, just accurately depicts what this.
Right, I think this house is just being sold, uh, like a few months ago, so I think this picture should be most.
So that's going to be exhibit two?
Yeah, exhibit A2.
A2, okay.
So that's why, I mean, we really like to have a more conventional looking and layout, just like my neighbors, right?
You want it to blend in more with the neighborhood?
Yeah, yeah, it's more consistent with my neighbors.
Okay.
So I think maybe that's also help address the, the second question, I mean, in the letter Deborah sent me this, this afternoon, regarding those of public good, public bad, like a positive impact and negative impact. I think, I mean, if we make the change like this, right, make it just like a, from street, it will be like a two layers, right, just consistent with all my neighbors, I think that, that the negative impact should be zero, I didn't see any negative impact. I mean, inside, I would see, I mean, the value of entire block could be increased.
Okay.
Because it's more consistent view regarding this, this neighborhood, right? So, uh, I couldn't see any, any, any negative impact for that. Well, the third one is why, uh, we propose this request of variances this time, not last year, not next year, just because of fire, right, as, you know, Mr. uh, Greg just mentioned, yeah, because we got a fire, uh, like, uh, early this year, one electrician came to my house to check and like fix the generator, I think this, it did something wrong, and then now my insurance, my attorney are handling that from legal perspective.
Okay.
But as a result, the whole house is gone. Now it's, it's a god job, now, I mean, because it's a brick, I mean, the outside is still there, right, but the inside is empty right now.
So you're taking advantage of the fact that you have to do some work.
Exactly, exactly, because now we need to rebuild, I mean, we saw that this is a, you know, opportunity, we can just incorporate those, like a, like a variance change with the rebuild.
Okay, well, it's a good time to do it when you have your work anyway, you might as well, but, um.
But basically, yeah, that, that's, that's what I'm going to say, yeah.
Um, let, let your architect, could you talk a little more about the plans and?
Sure.
You know, what's, what's on that floor and how it's laid out?
Well, did, were you finished with what you wanted?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I, I finished.
I think he's finished, yeah, I could tell he was finished.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll just walk through it, um, uh, so I'll start at the ground floor plan, um.
Which is not changing, right?
Which is not changing.
Okay.
Um, uh, uh, two large car bays, um, for the garage, about just under seven hundred square feet, uh, for that, probably, um, there's a, it's labeled as a home gym and recreation, uh, there's a front yard, um, the mechanical room, uh, for the furnace and water heater, and laundry room, uh, it's a full bathroom downstairs, um, and, um, that's the existing conditions, uh, to be fixed up.
So that's the walkout basement, right?
So walkout basement, uh, you see, uh, uh, the entry door, the rear yard, um, uh, off the recreation room towards the left side, uh, of the, of, of the ground floor.
Okay.
Alright, so, um, stairs up to the, uh, first floor, on the first floor, your major living areas of the foyer, uh, once you get to the top of stairs, um, there is a guest suite, uh, here, um, on the first floor, um, laundry room, office in the back, um, with the powder room, uh, but these are renovations, um, and then we have some modifications to the existing dining and living room in the front, and then there's an existing sunroom, um, that's, I guess was a three season porch, we're going to make it to, you know, uh.
Oh, so you, are doing some modification to that floor?
There's modifications, but this is all existing, there's no renovations.
Okay, just interior.
Interior, exactly, just this way, this way.
The reference photos here, um, everything that you see here, uh, on the, on the first two levels, the ground and the first floor is staying the same.
Okay, so the deck, everything back there is the same?
Yeah, that's proposed to be the same, as I would indicate on the elevations.
Wait.
The elevation, uh, this is the sunroom, that's on, um, posts, uh, open, there's open air there, um, see the side from there, and, and there's the, there is deck, uh, so everything in the rear on the first two levels is staying the same.
Okay.
Change is the second.
You're popping up the second, yeah.
Exactly, we're, uh, putting on an addition, that's about fourteen, uh, fifty-five square feet total, um, over the middle of the second floor, that's how it's viewed from the rear, but from the street, that's what you see.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, the two-story home where the second floor is, um, about three.
Set, setback.
Yes, oh, it's, it's about, it's about, it's in line.
But it's set back on the sides.
Oh, on the side, yes, yeah, yeah, so we want to, of course, we want to, the new construction to avoid the side of setback requirement, um, we don't want to encroach, you know.
Yeah, further encroach, yeah.
Further encroach, yeah, so, and we didn't want to build all the way across, that wasn't the intent of this, is to get adequate rooms that he, that Mr. Wong needs, uh, with full daylight, um, and, and fresh air.
Okay, without looking that imposing from there.
Yeah, just, uh, ju- just, just going back to the, yeah, let's get to the second floor plan. And what's being proposed on the second floor is, as you see here, uh, three bedrooms, uh, right, with the, the master suite, walk-in closet, bathroom, and then, um, the two bedrooms with the Jack and Joe bathroom in between, and then, um, take advantage of this construction project to, to create some amenity for just along with the, um, double height floor, so.
Okay, so that's, that centerpiece is just an o- is a high ceiling?
It's just a high ceiling, yes, yeah, open to below.
So it looks like a, a bigger space?
Trying to, yeah, make this cape look more like a colonial.
Okay.
So how many total bedrooms and total bathrooms also?
Right, uh, total bedrooms on the, uh, so, um, uh, three bedrooms on the second floor wound up, so there's four bedrooms total.
Okay.
Bathrooms, starting with the ground floor, one, two, um, it's a half, two and a half, um, three and a half, four and a half bedrooms.
Okay.
Okay, understood, thank you.
Four bedrooms, three and a half.
Well, it's really five bedrooms, because that office has a closet and a window.
Um, the office, um.
For, 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 for the first.
Yeah.
But it doesn't have access to its, uh, full bathroom anywhere nearby, it's, it's.
But it could be used as a bed.
It could be used as.
It's a hall closet, though, it's not in the room.
Um, yeah, the closet is in the hallway, too.
Oh, so it really doesn't have a closet in it?
It does not have a closet.
Okay, so if it doesn't have a closet, I think, what is it, what is it, doesn't have a closet, it's really not a bedroom, or how's that work?
How's it work, Harry?
There's no definition.
There's no definition, okay, what does real estate agents think?
If you have a bedroom, it's a bedroom.
Oh, okay, yeah, that figures.
You have a kitchen table, and guess what it's called?
It's a kitchen, right, there you go, but traditional speaking, if you don't have an actual closet in there, it, it's not usable, yeah.
Somebody who might want to sleep there, maybe.
Yeah, but you're using that as a, as a, as an office.
Not put a kitchen table in there.
Right.
You know, doesn't have any bearing on our.
You have two kitchens.
No, no, I'm just.
Just curious.
No, I, I know, I'm just clarifying the.
I just want to know, does it matter to us?
No, it really doesn't.
Well, our lawyer asked how many bedrooms, so I wanted to make sure he was getting the accurate number.
I appreciate it.
I don't know why, but he did.
Just wanted to clarify the use of rooms.
Total scope of what's being proposed there.
Yeah, right. A closet.
Right.
Yeah, and that, and that's the way it was built, that's the way the room was built.
No, no, it's just some modification.
We can do creative things with that, we can make that a mother-in-law suite if you want us to.
Was that, was that?
We'll have to come up with a new frame.
Yeah, was that room originally a bedroom with a closet, and the modification made without a bedroom?
Oh, oh, is this part, well, yeah.
I'm going to take on the.
Sure, take the mic with you, please, we've been a little lax on that, we need you to speak into the mic.
Got to get on the record.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, oh, originally, uh, I, try to write on, I'm not the architect, I think originally the, the dividing line is here, they have a, this is original bedroom, and here's another room my wife uses as an office.
Yeah.
Uh, then this is, is a kitchen, this side is a kitchen.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, now they just internally make it different to con, right, I mean.
Okay, so you're making the kitchen bigger and the bedroom smaller?
Right, right, right.
Yeah, there's a door into the powder room, right?
It's the hallway, yes.
The hallway.
And off the office.
Yeah, and, and also the office, correct, yeah.
Okay, um, alright, any other questions for the architect?
I've got one, so the, the side that's away from the garage entrance, um, is that, does that slope down the others, the other side, away from the garage?
Uh, at the garage, what, you want to know where?
The side opposite to the garage, the side of the house, opposite to the garage.
Oh, I'm sorry, the opposite here, okay.
Yes.
I could tell by one of the photographs, I think.
Yeah, uh, it's, it's, there's, there is, okay, go to the.
So looking at the picture, it looks like it's level, but I'm asking, is it?
No, no, it's, it's.
It slopes that way?
Yeah, it slopes, uh, there's about a two, it's two or three foot, the retaining wall in the rear, and then it slopes up to the front, thank you. Mm-hmm.
Mr. Asper, real quick, the, uh, I should have asked this previously, the, the plan set you have in front of you, just want to make sure it's the same one, that's the last revised date, was the original date September twenty-fifth?
September twenty-fifth.
Okay, just making sure we're looking at the same plan, so.
Sure, yeah, okay, mm-hmm.
And, uh, one other question, I guess, kind of a dumb question asked, but, because I know the answer, but the exterior of this addition, it's going to look, it's going to be aesthetically uniform with the rest of the house, right, it's not going to be like a different color, it's going to.
We're looking to, right, that would be, uh, out of the budget scope, uh, for Mr. Wong, you know, maintain continuity, so it doesn't have to redo everything.
Okay.
So it's going to be that same neutral colored brick?
Well, it's not going to be a brick up there.
Well, uh, uh, the, however, oh, uh, in, in some ways it's similar, uh, architecturally, but, uh, material-wise, uh, we're going for, um, uh, clabber over the, uh, the.
Okay, but it's going to be the same color, uh?
It'll be aesthetically uniform with the rest of it.
Right, well, it, exactly.
Alright, we're going to hold you see that as a condition of.
We're going to avoid any kind of metal panel type facade.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Okay, um, okay, go ahead.
I'll, I'll have a silly architect question, where the office where you, the powder room has a door going into it, and then there's another door, those two doors are swinging against each other, as an architect, is that something you do often?
If, if want double access, mm, yeah.
Which doors we talking?
I mean, it's just.
Referring to the powder room off the office, um, uh, for the convenience of the guests and whoever's in occupying, um, it was Mr. Wong's desire to have access directly from the office and the hallway.
The guest room is, not, does not have a door to that, you're talking about the office when you say guests?
We labeled it his office.
Okay.
Right?
He's saying guests in the.
Oh, from the house, okay.
Right, I mean, anybody who's not in the office directly.
Got it.
Just a point of observation, means nothing to the case, for the guest room, you showed the width, but not the length, actually did in other rooms, unless I'm supposed to just man.
Oh, I, you you raise a good point, I can give that dimension to you.
It matters, it matters not to me.
Oh, just tell us what it is, so we know.
For clarification, it is thirteen, uh, I'm sorry, this is a three sixteen scale. Yeah, eighteen feet wide, fourteen foot three, front to back.
Okay.
A nice side room. Again, that matters not either.
Now, would you classify the existing top floor, would you consider that an entire story or is that a half-story?
Yes, by code, uh, it, since it is more than one-third of the floor area below, and because this is considered a two and a half to three-story building, this, the uppermost story being more than one-third of the floor area below, will have to be classified as a story, and because of that condition, it, Mr. Wong will, has to do one of two things with regard to fire separations, either make it class A construction, which every level is separated with a one-hour separation, or sprinklering, Mr. Wong is proposing to sprinkler this building.
Oh, okay.
So as to avoid the, you know, the the the.
Don't want to repeat, right?
Yeah, raided doors and stairs that are totally enclosed and that sort of thing.
Right, right, to make it look less like an office.
Exactly, right, right, or elementary school, so, yeah.
So, I think, I just want to be clear, so, are you describing the proposed?
The proposed, yeah, the because of the addition.
Yeah, I understand, as it exists now, is that a two and a half story or a three-story building?
Oh, it's a two and a half story, yeah, yeah, as it exists now.
Okay, okay, because there were, I think there was a point of clarification on the plans, I think you might have wrote that it was two, when it's supposed to be two.
Yeah, yeah, I I would testify right now that it is a two and a half story building existing and proposed to be a three-story building.
Understood.
Yeah, with a third full story, yeah.
I don't want to steal our board planner's thunder, but she had a comment in her review memo that the that calculation on the plans seemed to be corrected, as well as noting that the required front yard setback here is seventy-five, not fifty.
Yeah, some confusion initially, we had a survey that indicated a fifty-foot line, for whatever reason, I don't know why I was there, but, or that maybe this home was in a development that that had fifty-foot setbacks, but if it's seventy-five feet, then it's seventy-five feet, and we would, you know, submit for a variance for approval for seven, for violation within, yeah, exactly.
If you get approval tonight.
If we, if we do, yes.
You'll meet up with the plans and everything.
Yeah, they have to.
Right, and then clarify the discrepancy.
Liz, before we continue, you have any questions?
I don't have any questions, I I can make some comments, but I can wait.
No, make comments.
Okay, so essentially, you know, they they are, require three variances, and two of them are related to height and one of them is related to the front yard setback, and I would say you could probably characterize all of them as hardships, because you have this existing building that is fifty-one feet from the front yard lot line when it's supposed to be seventy-five.
So it was built that way.
So it was built that way, and so they're they're sort of staying within the existing setback, and if they, it's also a lot that is about half of what is the minimum required in the zone, so if they pushed the building back to the seventy-five feet, then they'd run into the rear yard setback, so, so that's a, I would say, a hardship. The other thing is, because of the topography, you do have this basement, and it's not even, it's it's a basement that's walked out and then you have the garage, and it's it's sort of unfortunately counts against them, because it then it becomes.
A story.
A full story.
Right.
And because if it's a full story, that adds to the overall floor area, which pushes them to the, over on the floor area ratio.
Right.
So, they, um, if it was considered a basement, it would be excluded from the floor area calculation, and they have, the existing home is actually exceeds the maximum floor area permitted, so they've already.
Without the basement?
With the basement.
No, 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 currently.
Right, currently, already does.
Current situation, they exceed it.
And they're just making it.
But if you didn't count the basement, if the basement, let's say, was excluded, they would meet the FAR currently and they would meet the FAR proposed.
Okay.
Yes.
So it's just because it happens to be exposed in the rear.
Yeah.
And on this one side.
Right.
If it was just exposed on the garage level, you wouldn't have that issue.
Right, if it was less than fifty percent.
Right, right, would you be just.
Or the other way around, if the garage, if the garage was covered and it wasn't.
If it was detached or something, yeah, yeah.
Covered with soil to the.
Right, then they would, they would also, so they need it, so it's it's a hardship, so, and then again.
Similar to the to the houses on Long Hill Road.
Right.
On the top side, yeah.
And then the other variance they need is, as as the architect testified too, they are currently at two and a half, because they're sort of pushing out to to make that upper story more livable, it becomes a third story, you're only allowed two and a half stories, so that is a C variance for that extra half-story, so.
Do also to the basement being.
Yeah, it's all sort of, and and the kind of unusual topography and also just the existing conditions on the site which they have to work with, so those are sort of the three variances.
All of which cannot be modified, because that's the way it is.
Right, I mean, you know, right, exactly.
Yeah.
And 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 if they were to expand, as I think was testified too, they can't really expand to the rear.
Right, you can't expand on the ground level.
Yeah, exactly.
So this is, it keep, in in summarizing that, the the, what they're, you doing here on the on the quote-unquote third level is the most compact method of doing it.
It is, and I think what their testimony was, was that they've tried to make it so that the appearance from the street will not be sort of overly massive, or, you know.
Right, which it, it isn't if you look at the other houses that are on the street.
Well, and for clarification, you say height, but they're still within the thirty-five feet even with the third story.
Exactly, they are, they are, they're under it.
And and that's thirty-five feet measured from the back of the house?
Below the point.
The back of the house.
If it was done correctly, yes, it would be from the, if, can you test, uh.
Either the garage level or.
Where is the thirty-five feet, thirty-four, eight feet measured from?
Because it should be from the lowest grade.
From the lowest to the highest, it's thirty-four point eight.
Right, yeah.
Thank you for staying within the thirty-five feet.
Yes.
Could you actually provide testimony, if you're looking at the front facade, at post-construction, if this were to be approved, what would be from the 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 ground level on the front facade to the top?
Yeah, what would that?
On front elevation ground number one, it's a green chateau gray, front yard is twenty-eight point two.
And that's to the newest, the highest low?
The twenty-eight point two, okay, so it'll it'll peer twenty-eight point two feet to people on the on the street.
On the street, right.
Yeah, which is.
Smaller than.
Yeah, it's it's like a two-story home in Chatham that you see, you know.
From what I, from what I can see from your picture in the top right, the, nope, top right, that one, yes, and from what I've also seen from how the layout of the street, Robin Maria Street, you don't have a neighbor right in your backyard, correct?
No.
There's nobody who's going to be seeing that this looks like a three-story building from the back.
Yeah, I mean, my backyard neighbor.
Talk into the mic.
Sorry, yeah, my my backyard neighbor, I think maybe have one acre or two acres like a land, they're, I mean, they're 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 borderline, right, it's pretty close to my backyard, but their house, at least a half acre away from my house.
From top.
I I never saw them, I mean, I think maybe one or two times, their, this dog, you know, just walking around, but it's far away, I mean, it's a, it's a, I even couldn't barely see their house, I mean, also with trees, yeah.
And what what house does it, what street does their house?
Uh, Old Forge.
Old Forge, okay.
Yeah, Old Forge, I think my backyard neighbor, I think a couple, I mean, because that girl gave me the the list, I think they they own three addresses, one sixty-four, one sixty, one sixty-four, one eighty-two.
Okay.
They're 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 same owner.
Another street that it's on.
Yeah, on the back, in the back, yeah, but that's, but their house are all close to the Old Forge.
Okay.
Not not to my side, far away, at least a half acre away.
So you're not imposing on anybody in the back?
No, I I don't think so, I mean, they they even couldn't come close to my house, I'm sorry, yeah.
Right, no, we got you.
I don't see anybody in the audience, right?
No, 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 I'm just making sure.
Yeah, me too, yeah.
Yeah, all right, any other questions for the applicant or his architect or his expert? And you don't have any more, Liz, to add?
No, that those were really, it's fairly specific.
Yes, I know.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you want to sum up on some of the conditions?
I know nobody's here, well.
I know, all right.
I'm a member of the board of directors, speaking.
Um, I can't see beyond that, could you move that a little bit, just so I can see?
The lady from the newspaper, I think.
Yeah, there's only one person in the audience and that's the lady from the newspaper, you don't have any questions, do you? Okay, so I'm going to close it to the audience.
Do you want to make any comments?
Any comments?
I.
If you do, I got to swear, yeah.
Well, I'm, I'm good.
Good, okay, good.
You thought it was a planning board.
Yeah, she thought it'd be exciting, no, it's okay, uh, yeah, all right, no, it's the board of adjustment.
It's on the calendar, isn't it?
Yeah, it's on the calendar, it's the planning board, but we usurped their meeting.
Oh, okay, so it's the meeting.
Yeah, it's the board of adjustment.
Well, yeah, the agenda pages say that the planning board was canceled, and this actually went in the paper.
It went in the paper, okay.
Yeah, that we canceled it.
I think it was your newspaper.
Yeah, because I'm wondering, maybe I'll just hand you my business card, because maybe the notice is going to cover it there before.
Okay, yeah, maybe you could clear up that notice issue, all right, good.
Well, we'll start it out after.
We'll do that after afterwards, but hearing not, hearing no and seeing no audience, I close it to the audience, okay, um, would you deliberate, uh, would you like to start?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Wait, did you, didn't you want to have Chris do that?
Oh, yeah, well, let's deliberate first, then you can.
Can I ask Liz one question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Liz, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, so they need an FAR variance, do they also need a bulk for an excessive floor area, not a ratio, but just gross area?
No, there there there's nothing, the the floor area ratio in in Long Hill isn't a percentage the way it is in other towns, it's it's an actual square footage.
Oh, okay.
So that's what they, yeah.
Okay, all right, cool, just wanted to clarify.
Let's let's deliberate first, then you can do that.
They need a third floor.
Okay.
They need a third floor variance.
They, yeah, but but not, yeah, yeah.
Go ahead, Russell, if you can deliberate.
Thank you, uh, yeah, I I think, uh.
Randall, I'm sorry, Randy, what did I say?
Not a problem.
Russell Crowe, there's a couple.
Gladiator two came out, yeah, all right, I appreciate our planner Liz's comments about it being a true hardship, you know, you're kind of doing it the way you have to do it in this case, and you're going to make, to your point, Sarah, you're going to make it look more uniform with the other houses, so I think, I appreciate you pointing that out, um, you being surrounded by trees and things like that, I guess from the rear, if there was anything that would look quote-unquote different, again, that's just very minor, if even an issue whatsoever, so I would be in favor of it, so.
Thank you. Jessica.
Yeah, so for for basically the reasons that our planner laid out, I think that you've met both the criteria for the D four and the C variances, in terms of, you know, the positive, you are rehabilitating a home that was damaged by fire, so obviously that's very important for our community, in doing so, you're actually improving the way that the home looks, right, it's a little bit outdated in terms of the style, you're bringing it more into the current time, you're making the street look more consistent, what you're doing in the inside, I think, to your point, is going to add value to the home and the community, I don't see any negative, I think that just by, you know, virtue of the property, the way the house is designed now, and the fact that you're trying to work with what you have, that you're, you know, doing doing the best that you can with with what you have on the property, and I am for the application.
Gary.
I concur with my clients, my clients, my colleagues, my colleagues, Randy and and Jessica.
Thanks, Gary, thank you for.
Thank you.
Yeah, and, I'm assuming that you're not in the home right now because it had a fire, I don't want to waste any more time, I hope you can get back in there soon.
Thank you so much.
Okay, Jonathan.
Yeah, I agree that, you know, pretty much what Liz laid forward, I don't want to repeat everything, but I was, you know, my thoughts exactly, and I appreciate the, you taking the time to come speak to us, and I, you know, I think you have a good plan there, and I wish you good luck, I'll be, and I would be supportive of this.
Tom.
Oh, I have to agree with what everyone else has said about this, and thank you, Liz, excuse me for your comments, frankly, the existing top floor, whatever you call it, right now seems virtually uninhabitable, so this is, this is an example to me where our zoning requirements just do not fit, so I'm in favor of it.
Jerry.
I have nothing to add, I think Ms. Brennan and Mr. Watts did a great job of highlighting the positive, and and our our planner also, of how how we meet the positive, the positive and the negative criteria, there's no detriment to our zone plan or our zoning ordinance or anybody in the neighborhood, there's nothing wrong with this application, I'm in favor of it.
Thank you. Tom.
I concur with my colleagues, thank you again, Liz, for pointing out the fact that this is a gutted house that needs rehabilitation, let alone the fact that you're going to make it livable for people up in the top floor, whatever number that is, I'm very glad that the front will look nice, clean, in style with the rest of the neighborhood, and nobody can see the back, which I don't disagree, disapprove of, but there are people who like, don't like third and three and a half stories, it won't look like that, it's gorgeous, good luck, and hope you have a very successful project.
If I may add one thing, I forgot, I just wanted to say thank you for recognizing the thirty-five-foot height ordinance, in addition to our story ordinance, it was mentioned earlier in the meeting, but that's, I think that's a very important thing, thank you for respecting that.
Yeah, I concur with my colleagues, I think that this is a suitable project for the neighborhood, I think the house actually looks out of place now, and I think it will look more in tune with the neighborhood, the way it will look, and what you're doing to it is not obtrusive, it it fits the house, it is a minimal expansion of that level, but it's usable, it's a usable expansion, and I think it's going to look really suitable for the neighborhood, so I would be in favor of it.
Thank you.
Give us a.
Summary, Mr. Chairman, I'll do my best, actually, before I do, I was going through my notes, I realized I'm likely to bring something up.
Good.
We got an email from our board engineer, Joe Buch, earlier, I think it was today, actually, oh, no, yesterday, my apologies, he had one.
I'm sorry, a little clarify, everybody got a copy of that?
Yes.
It's attached to Liz's document.
Right, right, just want to, he had one recommendation that you guys do, and I just want to see if you agree to do this, the way I had, I understood it, was he was recommending that the the second-story roof area gutters and downspouts be diverted to the same drainage locations as the existing roof drains are directed to, does that make sense?
Yes, I I don't see why that would be possible.
Okay, so you guys will do that as a condition, should be approved?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, great, just wanted to make sure we got that covered, okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, all right, so let me go back to summarizing here, okay, so the applicant here is seeking a D four variance for the floor area ratio, maximum permitted here in the zone, which is the R two zone, is fifteen percent, they're propose, or, well, particularly for this property, would be four thousand four hundred and twenty-four square feet, and they're proposing an FAR of twenty-one point six percent, which equates to five thousand one hundred and seventeen square feet, they're also seeking a bulk variance for the principal dwelling front yard setback, that they're vertically exacerbating, they're required to provide a seventy-five-foot minimum front yard setback here, they're proposing the existing condition of fifty-one feet, it's going to be vertically, you know, exacerbated, finally, the last bulk variance they need is for the building height and principal building height in terms of stories, two-point-five stories is the maximum permitted here, they're proposing three, as far as conditions go, they would be complying with the one condition I noted from our board planners memo dated November twenty-fifth, that they, the applicant here would be revising the schedule of bulk requirements on submitted plans to indicate the existing dwelling is two-point-five stories, and that the minimum required front yard setback in the R two zone is seventy-five feet, they would also comply with that condition I just referenced from our board engineer, which is that the second, the proposed second story roof area gutters and downspouts shall be diverted to the same drainage locations as the existing roof drains, and I think the only other condition was that the exterior of the addition would be aesthetically uniform with the balance of the existing dwelling, and that's it, so we need to motion a roll call, and we need five out of seven to approve this one, Mr. Chairman, as it's a.
Do I have a motion? Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Aronia?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Grosskopf?
Yes.
Ms. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Gene Hopkins?
Yes.
Mr. Flatlin?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yeah.
Chairman Gurek?
Yes.
Motion care.
Thank you, good luck.
Thank you, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
For your time and, I mean, before Thanksgiving, the truly, the Thanksgiving.
Oh, thank you, we're glad we could, we could make your Thanksgiving.
I really appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
All the best.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah, good luck.
Good being touched.
Thank you so much.
No problem.
Deb?
Yeah.
Uh, how many applicants do we have on the seventeenth?
Two.
Oh, okay, because we, you know, Tom just pointed out to me that we actually haven't